All right, if everyone could take their seats, we'll call to order the public hearing, the continuation of the public hearing at 6:55 PM for the purpose of soliciting input with respect to the leasing and subsequent sale of 63 Prospect Street as requested by Lynda Wibby, Corporation Counsel. If anyone who wishes to address the board with respect to this lease, please sign up for the City Sheriff, please state your name and address for the record. There is a five-minute warning, and I will give you a one-minute heads-up. Mr. Sheriff?
First speaker tonight from 11 Steuben Street, Lawrence V. DePillo.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, Lawrence DePillo of 11 Steuben Street. I understand that this was a continuation from the last Board of Alderman meeting. Unfortunately, I haven't seen anything on the city's website regarding this contract. And as far as I know, Alderman only received a copy this past Friday from Corporation Counsel stating that they received a new contract which had no material edits or revisions that were made to the document previously submitted. And I guess there weren't any because for about five minutes before I left the house, I got to take a look at it, and I didn't see any underlines or red lines, so I don't know how anybody is supposed to know what the revisions are. Anyways, in regards to this contract, according to what was reported in the paper, the property's vacant in the city's hands. They wanted to sell to the Greater Waterbury YMCA for $1.8 million, and that received a ringing endorsement from the past Monday's Board of Alderman. It says the city clerk's office only received a copy of the proposed agreement the past Friday, and Board President decided to leave the hearing open so residents could consider the plan and comment before the board takes a vote. I don't know how we can vote on a plan that is not available to the public, not anywhere on the website unless somebody here can say where it is on the website. The city budgeted Rose Hill for $2.00 million. They bought it for $2.7 million in 2015 at the urging of Mayor O'Leary. That was after the board rejected what was then to be a more than $3 million purchase for the property. Proposed deal gave the YMCA access to the property for $90,000 down payment. The city would expect the remainder after one year, and the intention is to give the YMCA time to raise the funds to arrange financing. Not having seen the contract, or not having received anything until about 20 minutes ago, the question is, what is this lease? In the one year that the YMCA will have paid the $90,000, does this cover the boilers? Does it cover the air conditioners? Does it cover all of the commercial equipment that is in that residence? Whose responsibility is it to maintain, repair, and/or replace if anything goes wrong within the first year? Or is this lease inclusive, and the $90,000 is the pre-deposit on a purchase of $1.8 million? And any failures of equipment and/or other requirements of maintenance and/or major repairs to the building becomes the responsibility to YMCA? So what is the responsibility, and who's assuming what is responsibility? As far as the deal goes, I did check with purchasing. They say this property went up for more than three years, three times, and that there was no interest in anyone other than the YMCA. And for that reason, it makes sense to lease, then sell the building to the YMCA. Unfortunately, the taxpayers once again have received the short end of the deal. Mayor O'Leary again wanted us to pay more than $3 million for this property initially. We ended up paying $2.7 million for it, and unfortunately, we're getting $1.8 million. So the mayor's not much of a real estate mogul, to say the least.
One minute.
So again, it's a loss. The question is, is the state of Connecticut expecting any of its $1 million in return? I didn't see anything. Don't know if that's in the contract either. So is this a further loss to the city if we have to reimburse the state? Or is the state writing off its portion that it gave the city of Waterbury to purchase this building? And again, I just hope the Alderman, who I don't believe has had any better ability than I have to see this contract, will find out what the real terms are regarding the equipment, maintenance, and major repairs or improvements to this building within the time that it is under lease to the YMCA. Thank you very much.
Next speaker from 144 West Main Street, Mary Rosengrass-Chapulon.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Rosengrass-Chapulon, and I'm currently president of the Board of Directors of the Matic Museum located at 144 West Main Street. I am simply here tonight speaking to all of you on behalf of the 22 members of the Board of Directors in support of the YMCA's expansion project and proposed purchase of the Rose Hill property on Prospect Street. The museum has successfully collaborated and partnered with the YMCA on many occasions, and the proposed expansion of their campus will enable us to continue this partnership and improve and expand our programs and services for both children and adults of this community. This expansion, which is essentially an assemblage of our properties, will have a positive impact on both organizations on the Prospect Street area, which I just drove down, and in turn in the downtown area in the city of Waterbury. Therefore, we, the board, are asking all of you to consider and support this project. Thanks so much.
Next speaker from 1400 Merritt Road, Martin Spring.
Martin Spring, 1400 Merritt Road. I just want to speak briefly on this merger. I think it's something that we should look at. I know we had other previous speakers coming up even before the other public hearings, and they said it was a good deal and a good mix, but I think it's okay. We're not going to be losing money. But if we're going to be losing money, I think you should think about it, and I think what Mr. DePillo said for Alderman, you should look at the contract, because he's right. I looked on the website. I didn't see no contract. I did scan the web as much as I could, and I did browse it, and I didn't find any information at all about this. I know the YMCA is a great place. They do a lot of good things, and nobody would deny that. I know when we were kids, we went to the YMCA. A lot of us did. I know people within the Waterville Community Club, they bring their kids to the YMCA. Probably everybody here went to the YMCA. But the bottom line is, how much is this going to cost, and what expenses are going to be to the taxpayers? And I agree with some of these previous speakers, because we have to take that into consideration. We have to comprehend that. There's just, you know, something, we have to understand that the city of Waterbury, the residents, they just don't have the money to put anywhere. And, you know, maybe, you know, in the future, we could talk about this, but when they're going to have this, and they're going to have this for the children and everything, and I believe they said a daycare center, I believe the gentleman told me that, that's a good thing. I think they should maybe turn around and maybe offer some kind of incentive, if they're going to do that, to have people who live in Waterbury give some kind of a discount, if you will, when they go to the YMCA. I understand that they need the money, and everybody needs their resources, but the thing is, and also talking about the renovation, we have to think about the renovation, how much it's going to cost, and so many different factors within the situation here. Again, I am not opposed to this YMCA. I think it's a good fix for the kids, a good fix for the community. I think it's something that we should really all be proud of and love, because even the Matic Museum, I know they do a great job too here in the city. But the thing is, when they're going to turn around and renovate this place, maybe they should invite some of us people within the community and let us come up and see how things are moving forward within the YMCA and for the new facility up there and with the expansion. So all I can say is, I don't have the contract in front of me, and I'm glad Alderman, the former Alderman DePillo, brought that up. I wish we did have the contract, because I would have liked to seen more things on this so I could, you know, pay attention and watch this. Again, I'm not on the board of Alderman, so if I were you guys on the board of Alderman, I don't know, maybe you should table this for now and wait for another month and give us the people, give us each and every one of us an opportunity to look at the contract. I don't understand why things got to be hidden like this, you know? I don't know if it's done deliberately, or what's going on. But we are the taxpayers of the city of Waterbury, and we should look at contracts before they come before the Board of Alderman. And thank you very much, Mr. President.
Next speaker from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. I'm here tonight once again to echo my, in favor of this proposal for the site. I guess from listening to the previous speakers from a while ago, I'm kind of shocked that they don't have any confidence that the YMCA is going to raise all this money. Quite frankly, the Y I've been a member of for years, we all know originally what the Y looked like before the renovations that they had in the last few years and what the Y looks like now, thanks to the renovations that they have been able to do. And that was quite an undertaking, on the Y and working with the area, people that donate constantly to these causes. So I think down the line, the money is going to be there for this. And I guess what they're trying to say is, maybe the mayor should have just left Rose Hill alone. I guess the previous speakers are suggesting that we should have left it to become a juvenile detention center, as it was possibly scheduled to be, or a methadone clinic. I think that this is a better suit for the property. I think it's going to do what we needed to do, is to get more of our youth off the streets and teach them to become better citizens and giving them the skills that they need that they might not have the ability to get out there through their programs. You know, in the time that we're seeing, kids have to make choices every day. We see it in the paper every day. These so-called gangs that think that they're going to take our kids down the wrong path, they're nothing but thugs. We have a lot of people that are here tonight trying to do something and trying to teach our kids, and we should do everything that we can to help this go through. So I would ask that this board look into this contract and to say here tonight that it's being hidden. There's a legal process in how contracts are done before it's signed. So that's why it's not all, I mean, there's a legal way of how we do things in America. There's a judicial system that we have to follow. So to say that we're hiding this from the citizens and, you know, corruption supposedly as usual, as some like to say up here all the time, that's not the case. So I would like to see this board work with the Y and get this done. It's exactly what we need in that area, and it's exactly what we're trying to do with downtown. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Thank you. With that, we will close the public hearing and call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Alderman. And this evening, before we start, I would just like to ask, obviously, that you keep the, our former colleague Greg Hadley and his family in your thoughts and in your prayers. Obviously, Greg passed away very prematurely, a little over a week ago, and he's going to be sorely missed on this board. Greg was always a consummate gentleman. He always was a wonderful public servant who put the interests of the city ahead of everything else while he was on this board, very involved in the community. So we're going to miss him greatly. I understand the funeral services will be Friday at 9 o'clock, and there will be a, like a reception tomorrow night from 5 to 8 at the WOW NRZ with Greg's family, if anyone is interested in going there as well. So with that, would you all please stand for a pledge of allegiance and a silent prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Burnelli.
Here.
Alderman Cavalo.
Here.
Alderman Cato.
Here.
Alderman DiGiovin Carlo.
Here.
Alderman Dorsa.
Here.
Alderman Giacomo.
Here.
Alderman Kula.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Matthews.
Present.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
Here.
Alderman Napoli.
Here.
Alderman Nujain.
Present.
Alderman Sherman.
Here.
Alderman Pernaroski.
Here.
14 present.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Just before we get to public speaking, I do want to note the flowers on Greg's desk are from our Park Commissioner, Tom Pelletier, so thank you very much for that gesture, Tom. It's very heartfelt, and we appreciate it. And I also just want to recognize, because this is the last meeting we'll have before he leaves, our Chief of Operations, Joe Gary, who is leaving city service after 40 years on Friday. And I think I can say on behalf of the board and on behalf of myself personally that he's going to be sorely missed. I think Joe was a consummate public servant over his 40 years, and I know we've worked very closely over the last 15 years when he's been Chief of Staff and then Chief of Operations. Joe is an example of what public servants should be. He was on call constantly. He never failed to answer a request for assistance from anyone regardless of which side of the aisle they were on. We wish you the best in your next stage of life, Joe, but we're really going to miss you. So good luck. Anyone who wishes to address the board on any item, please again sign up with Mr. Conway, the City Sheriff. Again, please state your name and address for the record. There is a five-minute limit, and I will give you a one-minute heads-up. Mr. Sheriff?
First speaker tonight from 45 Pear Street, Sharon L. Samaska.
Before you start timing me, I just wanted to let you know, I was asked to come here by the staff at the Sewer Department because they could not answer my questions and did not know who could accept you. My first point is...
Would you just state your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sharon Samaska, 45 Pear Street in Waterbury. My first question to you, first area, is the inequality of cost of water in the city. I live in, I believe, what you used to call Ward X, the South End of town. You come down Highland Avenue, and the city water stops, and Nogatuck Division of the Connecticut Water Company picks up. I contacted the tax collector at the request of the Water Department and the Water Pollution Department. I was requested to come to you tonight. Residents where I live are paying three times what a resident in the city of Waterbury pays. Example, my current bill was $24 CCF. In Waterbury, you pay $60. I pay $201. I'm concerned, and when I asked the sewer people about this and the Water Department about this, the Water Department said, "We can't pump Waterbury water into your area." I said to the sewer people, "I have a problem, because I'm paying taxes to Waterbury," which in part do help with the water plant, they do help with the sewage plant. The sewage plant has also taken off summer usage. For me, that's $20 to $30 for that cycle. They claim they no longer can recognize the differences, that our summer usage is not going to be counted. Well, $20 to $30 for our residents is a grocery bill. I think we need to look at that. Why was it stopped? Why can they not do this? Why can't the city take over? Is there something that you can do to make this more equitable? Is it fair for us as residents in Waterbury, who pay taxes to Waterbury, to pay three times what the rest of Waterbury pays for water? It's another example to me of inequity in the South End that we need to address, and you're the people who hopefully can help us do that. Second question, sewage treatment plant. I called last week because of an odor on Wednesday. It started about 4:00 or 5:00 in the afternoon, persisted through the wee hours of the morning to the point where it was noxious enough I had to close my windows. I couldn't even eat dinner in my kitchen until I did. I inquired the next day if there'd been a spill. I didn't understand the reason for the odor. A woman put me through to someone in the staff, who talked so fast on his voicemail, I could not understand him. I asked for a call back. I did not get one. The staff member whom I spoke to the previous day called me again the next day and asked me the question of, "Oh, does the mayor know about this? Oh, what was the weather yesterday?" Should I be answering those questions? My question was, "Why is there an odor? Is it a spill?" Because to me, it smelled like a spill. I was told I would get a call back, that they were looking into this. To date, I have not had a call back. She asked if I called the sewer company or the Sewer Department that night, and I said, "Why? You already told me that if I did, the odors won't be acted on at night." And she said, "Does it smell now?" And I said, "Of course not. It's daytime, the sun's out, the atmosphere has changed." I don't know what to do about this. I'm asking you for help. How do we report an odor when it's happening, and how do we get a response when it's happening? And how do we get follow-up communication? Are citizens not thought intelligent enough or respected enough to get an answer? My third problem is USA Hauling. I am one of three people in the last few weeks who have noticed trucks driving from that facility at higher rates of speed than the posted limits, who are not being courteous drivers. The truck I followed was leaching out paper and cardboard all along, and I got on Route 8 behind him, and he continued to do that.
One minute.
Okay. Two other people have seen the trucks turning onto Baldwin Street, and I presume that's because the ramp on Route 8 is now closed. We were told that if F&amp;G were to get their contract, they had specific routes to travel. I'm concerned that we're seeing the abuse of the routes already, and two people were almost in harm's way because of that. And that's just letting you know what I'm thinking. The third question, or fourth question I have, and you perhaps can help me. I've reported to the police department over the summer many times about speeding and wheelie-deeles, or whatever the correct term is, on Highland Avenue, Platts Mill Road, Bristol Street, and South Main. Our police department is obviously overburdened. They cannot come out for this, but sooner or later, those screeching brakes are going to not mean just a fence knocked down, but it's going to be someone's life. And I don't know how to get an answer, and perhaps you can help me do that, and thank you.
Next speaker from 11 Steuben Street, Lawrence V. DePillo.
Lawrence DePillo of 11 Steuben Street. There's a couple of items on your agenda. Item number seven is for 562 Connecticut LLC. Looks like the Education Department's getting into a 10-year straight lease. I didn't see anything in that lease that gave city a bailout clause from that lease. And, you know, instead of taking a five-year lease with two- or three-year additions, this is a straight 10-year lease. It also talks about the fact that we're responsible for all equipment, including the maintenance and replacement of the rooftop air conditioners. I assume that also means all heating systems and everything else that goes along with it. It seems we're not only responsible for maintenance, but for replacement, should it be required. And there's even a prorated amount, should the roof need to be repaired or replaced. I ask you to take a good hard look at this contract, because I do not believe it's in the city's best interests. And then you have item number eight. Item number eight is requesting approval of the capital appropriations for $5 million for the improvement to Municipal Stadium, for new locker room and restroom facilities, replacement of artificial turf, associated area improvements. This is the same $5 million that was knocked down by the Board of Alderman a number of years back when the mayor wanted to spend that money. I think the Municipal Stadium editorial page said it best today. An argument also could be made that several mayors, including Mayor O'Leary, have thrown a great deal of money after bad, good money after bad. Last week, Mayor O'Leary unveiled a set of plans for construction of a freestanding 8,500-square-foot locker facility and replacement of the aging artificial turf surface in the football soccer field at the Municipal Stadium complex. The price, $4 million for the locker facility and $1 million for other improvements, including the new football soccer surface, seems to be high. For example, the school board in South Bend, Indiana approved construction of a 13,200-square-foot freestanding building at its football stadium for $273 per square foot. The project Mayor O'Leary has in mind would cost $471 a square foot. By the way, that's an additional $1.683 million from what that freestanding building was. And we did look at freestanding buildings, and $5 million is way, way out of whack. And then it goes on to say the price is too high. Waterbury cannot afford to maintain a spend-it-if-you've-got-it mentality. And that is obviously the mentality of this mayor, so I ask that you reject this $5 million. I understand Jeff Berger is trying to get $2 million from the state, and the mayor obviously is going to give that $2 million to some developer who's going to charge us twice what we should pay per square foot for an 8,500-square-foot building. Number 11. Number 11 is requesting approval of acquisition of properties for the water project. I took a look at that, and I've got some, a couple of issues. There's a number of properties there, and I'd like you to look at the 195 Frey Street owned by Davis Avenue Greenwich LLC. I love the names they put after these LLCs, and that nobody can ever find out who they are or where they are. Anyways, there's a Meatheads LLC that's part of that 195 Frey Street, probably a renter, but owes us taxes from 2015 to 2016. It says, "Call the tax collector's office." Maybe before we give Davis Avenue Greenwich LLC the money, we can see if they can help us collect those back taxes. Same thing with 170 Frey Street owned by MRT Realty, Conceal LLC, H&amp;H Cleaning &amp; DeBurring, Inc., Nolan Mark. All owe back taxes. All say, "Call the tax collector's office." Maybe MRT Realty, before they get paid for that property, can have us, can assist the city in collecting those back taxes. So we just don't, you know, we're just not the piggy bank for everybody. And then you have the West Main Street owned by Environmental Waste Removal. That stands on its own, 2003 to 2017, no taxes collected, back water, back sewer. Let's hope no one's going to get a dollar for that. As a matter of fact, they probably owe us quite a few million dollars by now. And the last is the 45,000 square feet and 54,000 square foot on Jackson Street owned by Pan Am Railway. Look up Pan Am Railway in the tax office. There is no Pan Am Railway, so nobody pays taxes.
That's a lie, Mr. DePillo.
Or again, they got the wrong name or the wrong information. Thank you very much.
Next speaker from 1569 Thomaston Avenue, James Monroe.
My name is James Monroe, 1569 Thomaston Avenue. I'd like to... I'd like to take this opportunity to thank this board for honoring my friend, Ray Hadley. He was really an inspiration to y'all, but even more, he was an inspiration to our community. What a great person. Once again, thank you.
Next speaker from 1400 Meriden Road, Martin Spring.
Martin Spring, 1400 Meriden Road. I also like to give my sentiments to the Hadley family and members of the Board of Alderman. I know we all loved Greg, being Republicans, Democrats, it didn't matter. Greg served with us on the Human Rights Commission for about four years. He was always a stand-up guy. He worked with us each and every time, went before the Reverend Mallory passed away, God rest his soul, and they were all good friends, and we all worked diligently hard on that board, and we still continue to do that because of the inspiration he left with us. And he's going to be sorely missed, because Greg was a good friend of mine. I come to the Board of Alderman meetings, as you guys have known, ladies and gentlemen. I would talk to him after the meetings, and I know he came to Waterville Community Club a couple of times, and that was way out of his district, but Greg was a stand-up guy, and that's what he did. And I'll be honest with you, I was totally shocked when I read in the paper, you know, because the missus brought this up to me, and I know all you people are going to go to the wake, and, you know, hopefully we'll all be able to go, and all the Human Rights Commissioners, that would be appropriate to show up at this wake, to show that we do support the family, and he's still in our hearts, and we still love the guy, because I might say, I might not agree with some of the things he voted on, but still, no, I think he was a stand-up guy, and he always showed a lot of respect, and he was very diplomatic, and would be able to stand around and talk about things, and even at our last meetings that we had on the Human Rights Commission, he was always trying to do what he could to help us on that board. So, I just want to say, and I want to thank Mr. Palatier for the flowers that he put there, and very kind of you, Mr. Palatier, to do what you did. And so, hopefully, you know, we'll all just remember that and keep Greg in our hearts, because, again, Greg was a wonderful human being. There's some other things I did want to talk about. When you have all these things that are happening in Waterbury, I lived in Waterbury all my life, I'm glad the police officer's here, and by the way, he's our new rep for the Waterville Community Club. We love Mike, Mike G. Anyways, there's so many bad things happening with these kids with these guns. You know, I'm a legitimate gun owner, as you guys know, and whether we're veterans or not. The bottom line is, there's so much tragedy. I mean, I've never seen so many gunplay, so much gunplay, if you will, in Waterbury. And something's got to be done. I don't know if the Board of Alderman's got to step up to the plate. I think when Ron, you get to go to Hartford, or Steve, you get to go to Hartford. I think we guys got to do some type of new legislation here, because this is just too much. You know, I believe in the Second Amendment and everything, but these kids, they, I don't know if it's early release or halfway houses or what, but I think they should look about maybe putting a juvenile detention center here in the city of Waterbury, and bringing something positive to Waterbury, and, you know, you can't have these kids running wild in the streets, because, you know, they're stealing cars, and Mr. Lopez, you see what happened, or wherever you could go to school. I mean, God forbid, someone's going to get hit by a car someday, and you're going to have a tragedy on our hands. Something's got to be done, and ask them, I plead with the members of the Board of Alderman to work with the Waterbury Police Department, work with the Board of Education. Do what you got to do, and if you get up to Hartford, any one of you guys, get up there, do what you got to do, and implement some type of legislation that's going to be appropriate, that's going to help people. Because, I'll tell you right here and now, this is a horrible thing that's going on. As I said, I lived in Waterbury, and I'm sure everybody who lived in Waterbury majority of their life, I've never seen homicides like we've seen in Waterbury. I've never seen the gunplay. I've never, how these kids, like my wife said to me, "How come these kids aren't in school?" Was it a breakdown in the family or something? You know, my father-
One minute, Mr. Spring.
Okay. My father was a drill sergeant, United States Army, and believe me, eight years, and he was overseas. They had eight kids, but we all turned out pretty damn good, and I'm telling you, if we didn't do what they, I want to say my old man, that's disrespectful, my father, okay? If we didn't do what my father wanted, you know what would happen to us, okay? And maybe that's what these kids need, is some severe discipline, because something's got to be done. And before I go, I just want to go without saying, Joe, we're going to miss you. Every time I called Joe up from Waterville Community Club, being the president, we always did everything, worked together. Joe was a stand-up guy, and, you know, hopefully you're going to hang around, Joe, and we're going to miss you at the Board of Alderman, because every time I spoke to this man, he always helped us out, each and every time. Whenever I called him, I wouldn't care if it was one o'clock in the morning, Joe would call me right back. All right, thank you.
Next speaker from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. Quickly, I'd like to ask for the approval of item number eight. I think that this mayor has had a proven track record, any project he's taken on. This is just another project that was laid on his lap, and he's done the best he can to get it done, and I believe that he's going to be able to finish getting this done. Secondly, I wanted to also thank Joe Gary. I've known Joe for an awfully long time. You can call him at any time at night. I could tell you that when the West Main Street, Watermain, had blown, Joe, as always, was out there with any event that happened in the city. My fondest memory of that was, I usually, at any scene, we had the habit of either Joe got there before me, or I got there before he did. West Main Street, I can remember him saying to somebody, "Who the heck is that out there with the reflective rain jacket?" And they said, "Tommy Pelletier," and he got a good chuckle out of that. So, you're going to be sadly missed, Joe. I know, I could have called you at any hour, any day, and you were just as happy to receive a call from me. You know, I've considered you, I would say a father, but I don't want to jinx you, so I'll say an uncle. And you'll be sorely missed. I don't believe, I know that the individuals that will be covering your job are good people, and they're going to have some pretty big shoes to fill, and I'll do anything on my part to help them. Secondly, I just wanted to take a moment, I know everybody's thanking me for the flowers, but, in speaking to members of the caucus and other members of this board, I just thought it was fitting to put something up there to celebrate. A person who was definitely full of life was out there in this city consistently, no matter what part of the city, but he worked so very hard for the North End, and worked with this administration on a lot of issues to revitalize the North End and that part of town. He's going to be greatly missed. I can remember times, you know, there was a side of him that he was a good person for a laugh, or taking a laugh. I can remember the night of my swearing-in. Shortly after, I had gotten a few calls congratulating me, and we had met out later that month, and Alderman DG and myself were with him, and he said, "How's it going so far?" And I said, "It's going great." You know, I serve at the pleasure of the mayor, but I work for the citizens of Waterbury, and he had me repeat that again, and he got such a laugh out of that, he goes, you know, he goes, "That was such a great line." He goes, "Where'd you get it from?" And I said, "Tom Zollick on Blue Bloods." And he goes, "Blue Bloods?" He goes, "Were you a Magnum P.I. guy or a Blue Bloods guy?" I said, "A little bit of both." So, we had a lot of chuckles, and, you know, it's, for me, it's going to be sad up there looking and not seeing him anymore. He was just a guy you could go to at any time, willing to help anybody, you know, no matter what the circumstances are. I was really touched-
One minute, Mr. Pelletier.
I was really touched in reading the part about how he would take his stipend that, you know, he would get, being on this board and donating into charity, and, you know, that's truly something to celebrate right there. Somebody who not only comes here and wants to make Waterbury great again, but gives back to the community, and my heart goes out to his family and this board, and anything I could do for his family or you guys, please let me know. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Thank you. The next item would be the approval of minutes for the meeting of Tuesday, September 4th, 2018, special meeting, and the Monday, September 10th, 2018, regular meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion approved, the special meeting minutes for Tuesday, September 4th, 2018, and the approval of minutes for the regular meeting of Monday, September 10th, 2018. So moved.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Lopez. Alderman Napoli, are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries, the minutes are approved. You have, you should have on your desk this evening, the Waterbury Police Department 2017-2018 annual report that they wish to submit to us. So, at this point, I would entertain a motion to add that to the agenda as new business, item number 12, to be received and placed on file.
Motion approved, item 12.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries, the item's added as new business number 12. You also should have the copy of the purchase and sale agreement with some slight revisions on it that was on your desk this evening. I would point out that we received a copy of the purchase and sale agreement at our last meeting. It was available the Friday before the last meeting, two weeks ago. That document is substantially the one that's in front of you this evening that we're voting on, that we continued the public hearing. The document has been in the clerk's office, and it's been with the Alderman for the last two weeks. So, you do have a slightly updated version, and the Corporation Counsel is here, can explain any of those changes to you. So, with that, we will break in the committees, we'll do intergovernmental, oh, no, items eight and nine on the agenda under new business are both referenced on the agendas being referred to intergovernmental, but they really are more appropriately finance committees because they are bondings and the purchase of the streetlights. So, without objection, we're going to refer those instead of to intergovernmental to the finance committee this evening. And with that, we will recess into committees. We'll begin with the finance committee and go to intergovernmental.
Call the finance committee meeting to order. Item number three. Your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the city of Waterbury financial status report, final fiscal year, end 2018, as submitted by Sarah R. Gary, policy and budget management specialist.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. Alderman Giacomo.
Thank you, Alderman DG Van Carle. Sarah, how are you tonight?
Good, how are you? Good evening.
Good, thank you. Just quickly, you know, I, after all these years, I just, you know, kind of want to make sure that this is on the record here. If I'm reading this correctly, and I think I am, our expenditures for last fiscal year were over seven million dollars less than what we budgeted at the beginning of the fiscal year, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, in other words, we budgeted a certain amount, but we were able to run the city efficiently and effectively without any cuts or significant cutbacks to services for seven point, almost 7.4 million dollars less than what we had originally appropriated.
I could just give a little background on the surplus. The FY '18 surplus is just under $335,000. As you all may remember, the state of Connecticut didn't adopt its FY '18 budget until late October of 2017. That was four months into our fiscal year. So, you'll also notice that revenues came in $7 million under the budgeted amount. $5.8 million of that was related to state aid. We had anticipated, when the budget was first passed, getting about $5.6 million less than state aid. That grew in the fiscal year to over $6 million, and ultimately, at the end of the year, state aid came in at about $5.8 million under budget. So, throughout the fiscal year, we relied on departments to keep positions open, to really keep tight controls on their spending, so that's how we ended up with the expenses about $7.4 million under budget, with also the revenues at $7 million under budget, resulting in a modest surplus of $335,000.
Right. No, I think it's fantastic, and I think my compliments to, you know, the entire, every city department, the mayor's office, and you and your staff. You know, again, we budgeted a certain amount in appropriations, and then dealing with tough fiscal times, we were able to run the city without, I mean, unless I'm wrong, there were no cutbacks, or city services did not suffer at all, for seven, almost $7.4 million less than what we had originally appropriated, correct?
That's correct. I think we could say that all of our departments did more with less in FY '18. The department heads did a great job in operating their departments, again, with leaving positions vacant, with really limiting discretionary spending. It was a difficult year, again, not knowing what state aid looked like until four months into the fiscal year, so we appreciate all the efforts of the department heads and their staffs, and it was difficult to end the year with a small surplus of $335,000.
Now, certainly a difficult year, and very well done, showing how the city can be run and could possibly be run by, as you said, doing more with less, so thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Alderman DG. I'm all set. I know, you're probably surprised. I'm good.
You are done, Alderman Giacomo, I apologize. Further discussion? Hearing none, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Item number four. Your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman receive and place on file the general fund for fund balance report for FY '18, as submitted by Sarah R. Gary, policy and budget management specialist.
So moved.
Discussion.
Alderman, DG Van Carle, if I may, just a couple comments on this report.
Sure.
This is our fund balance report for FY '18. Just wanted to point out that our fund balance was about $23.1 million at the beginning of FY '18. The $335,000 surplus that we just spoke about, that entire amount will lapse to our fund balance, bringing it to $23.4 million. Three million of that is designated for mill rate mitigation in our FY '19 budget, so it leaves an undesignated fund balance of about $20.4 million.
Further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number five. Your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the per-capita funding application, contract awarding the amount of $113,898.94, as submitted- funding application contract awarding the amount of $113,898.94, as submitted by Cynthia Vitone, Health Department.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, discussion? Hearing no discussion, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman set a public hearing for October 9th, 2018, at 6:55 in these chambers for the capital appropriation and bond authorization for improvements at Meniscus Stadium in the amount of $5 million, as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance.
So moved for the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, just very briefly, and I would ask you to set the public hearing this night. Unfortunately, the mayor had a family conflict, he couldn't be here this evening, but I just, on his behalf, wanted to point out to you that this has been a process that's been ongoing. The numbers that are part of this are part of a competitive bid. It will be for a construction manager, the price will be guaranteed when it comes in. And there was a committee that looked at how to fit this all out, that was made up of myself, Alderman Giacomo, Joe Begnol, as chairman of the Park Board, and Representative Berger, to try to make sure that we came up with something that would make the stadium useful. And at the, we'll have a presentation next meeting to do it, but I know there's been some issues raised out there already at this point. I just want to make clear that there is a process that's going on. This is something that's considered to be an enhancement to the stadium, to make it as useful as possible with the work we've put in. We did put it off in the past, but it wasn't the idea ever that we would never get to it, but simply that we would get to it at another time and that we would do it appropriately. So with that, I would ask that you set the public hearing. We will have a presentation that evening as well, and then we'll have all of the backup information at that time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the purchase agreement, purchase and sale agreement with Connecticut Light and Power, DBA, or EverSource Energy in the amount of $2,103,524.91, as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, discussion? Alderman Giacomo.
Thank you, Alderman. Mike, how's it going tonight?
Good, how are you this evening?
Good, thank you. Just by way of clarification, you know, I'm trying to remember when this first came up and we talked about our efforts to change the lights and et cetera. Is this a change from what we had previously discussed? Or is this just sort of implementing what we had already discussed, this program to change the streetlights?
Yeah, it's all consistent with what was previously before you, which was the authorization, the additional financing that needed to be approved in order to move forward, and also the amendment to the contractor with Naresco, who will be handling the conversion of the system from the halogen light setup to the LED setup.
Okay. And I know I had gotten a question before the meeting about whether this was a switch that we had talked about previously, who would still own the poles and who would be in charge of the maintenance and things like that. But this isn't, as you said, this isn't a change from what had been previously discussed?
No, certainly once the acquisition is completed, for the 7,000 and change fixtures that the city acquires and approximately 700 residential poles that we will be acquiring, from that day forward, the city will be responsible for the maintenance of those components, those poles and those light fixtures going forward. During the conversion period, Naresco will handle any associated maintenance requirements. And during that period of time when the system is getting converted, we will be issuing an RFP to hire a company that will maintain the fixtures and poles that we own thereafter. It's imperative, certainly for the city, for the residents, that if there's an issue that comes about, that it get addressed timely. Certainly currently, the mayor's office and the Department of Public Works have the ability to call EverSource to address those issues. And then going forward, again, following acquisition, there will be a company that will be on call, that we will call going forward when issues come about.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, but a further discussion? Mr. LeBlanc, I'm going to echo what Alderman Giacomo says. The poles were in the last agreement, purchasing of poles? I thought it was just lighting fixtures. I'm just a little worried about liability. If we own the pole, are we going to be able to charge for others using our poles?
Well, to that point, you know, there, out of the seven, over 7,000 poles in the city, we're only going to be acquiring 700 of them, so about 10% of the poles. The poles that we're going to be acquiring are going to be those residential lights that are not, don't have any other connections on them. So it's just the light fixture. And certainly if any one of those poles is damaged, it's something that we would be responsible for fixing going forward. But if there's poles that currently have other electrical lines or interconnections on those poles, those are not the ones that we're going to be acquiring.
So my concern is someone takes out one, two, three of these poles, unregistered vehicle, we're on the hook for it, the city's on the hook for that pole? That's my only concern, is now that we're passing it on.
Yeah, we would be responsible for, and to the extent, you know, it's not going to be that frequent that that type of situation occurs, but when it does occur, we would be responsible, certainly through our Corporation Counsel's office, to the extent that there's an ability to seek recovery of those losses that would occur. And keep in mind that when we did the evaluation, the feasibility study as it relates to this, we factored in that there would be certainly some associated annual cost going forward for maintenance and repair on the system. And even with that additional new cost to the city, the savings from converting over, from paying EverSource for that service to now having it be under the city's domain, the savings are significant. As right now, that service is built into the rate that we pay. So we're paying it either way regardless of how many occurrences of issues that we have.
Okay, we will be hiring a company 24 hours on call with the ability to replace that pole as needed?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion? Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $1,906.94, submitted by Frank A. Caruso, Jr., Revenue Collection Manager.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, discussion? Hearing none, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the purchase and sale agreement of 63 Prospect Street.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, discussion? Alderman Sherman.
Thank you, Alderman DiGiovan Carlo. Under Exhibit A, for the lease, it mentions at 10.1, that the city will be essentially responsible for most major repairs during the lease of this. Is that a typical arrangement for lease leasing?
Absolutely. So major repairs being something that is the owner's responsibility in most leases.
So at the end of the one year, is that when the YMCA will then take ownership of the?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. There's representatives of the Y here, if you have any questions for them as well, as well as Joe Suma, who's the president of the board, and just you two left, just you two left. So if you have any questions about it, they are here as well, and they were here at last meeting as well.
Don't get me wrong, I'm very much in favor of the Y having access to this facility and for their future use. Little disappointed in the loss of taxpayer money.
How, oh, you mean, I'm sorry.
But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Alderman Giacomo.
Thank you, Alderman DiGiovan Carlo. Linda, how are you tonight?
Fine, thank you and yourself.
Good, good, thanks. I think Alderman Sherman touched on it, and so I want to say the same thing. I think that this is fantastic. I think the Y is a really well-run organization under the leadership of Mr. O'Rourke. They've been on, you know, quite a run, and the Board of Directors, several of whom I know, have done really well by the city and really all the people, adults, seniors, children who use the Y. But just, you know, for full disclosure and information's sake, so the public knows the full scope of this deal, I think it's been talked a lot about that we paid 2.7 or 2.8, and that this agreement, we're selling it for about a million less than that. Were there, do you know, does anyone here know what, if any, additional costs were associated over the last several years of owning this? Utilities, heat, anything like that that would have been in addition to the purchase price?
I'm looking at Finance Director Michael Blank, and at one point, he did look at it. They were obviously, the cost that you're identifying, that the city has incurred, believe it or not, I believe the last time I saw it, the heat was minimal, because it's not been occupied, but we have been maintaining it.
Okay, but we don't, we don't know, you know, just for, as I said, the general public or anyone who might be interested, what that total would be?
I don't have it, but we can provide it to you. I know the Finance Director did calculate it.
Okay. As again, just curious, I agree with Alderman Sherman, I'm in favor of the Y acquiring this. Obviously, a little disappointed, you know, we're certainly paying a premium. Sometimes you pay or incurring, you know, a little loss, I guess you could call it paying a premium, in order for good things to happen. I certainly think this is a good thing, but at the same time, you know, I do remember being told at the time we acquired it, that it would be a quick turnaround, nine months to a year. You know, we're sitting here all this time later. I think part of this is good job by the YMCA and good luck, looking forward to see what they can do, but also perhaps a lesson learned about, you know, not to be too hasty when trying to sell certain members of this board on what to acquire and what not to acquire. You know, again, we're losing money, but we're acquiring a good partner on the Y, so.
I have to say a couple things. One is the state is not looking for the repayment of the $1 million under the grant that we received for it. And two, we did put a use restriction in this agreement, not only for the lease, but subsequent sale. It is the right use for the property, and we're preventing further deterioration or an unwanted use in the downtown area. So we did accomplish that?
No, I agree. And I think it is the correct use and it's, you know, the correct user, if you will, for lack of a better term. And your point about the state is well-taken, but whether the state of Connecticut and Governor Mallory or anyone in Hartford wants to recoup taxpayer dollars, or whether we want to recoup it, it's still lost dollars, so. But again, we move forward, I look forward to seeing what Mr. O'Rourke and his team can do. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
It was inadvertently called by Finance. That one actually happens to be an intergovernmental, so that's the committee that will take it up. But I assume your question and answer will stand and won't have to be repeated.
It would have been asked, yeah. Thank you.
Well, Linda wants to do it again, so you can ask the same question.
As a matter of fact, I was texting some of my colleagues in intergovernmental when I heard this being happening, and I just backspace, backspace, I'll ask it myself.
Alderman DiGiovan Carlo is very energetic and he's raring to go, and we just can't hold him back, so this is what happens.
Your finance committee would like to adjourn? Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
We are adjourned.
Let's call into order the intergovernmental committee meeting scheduled for September 24th, First item on the agenda is item number two. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approves amendment number one to change the contract time for the engineering agreement, RFQ number 5350, between the City of Waterbury and Reso Associates Incorporated for the Shipog Reservoir Dam Repair Engineering Services Project for the Waterbury Water Department, as submitted by Donald Carver, Superintendent of Water. Alderman Napoli.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve item number two, which has been seconded. Discussion? Going to Mr. Carver. Thank you for being here, sir. I just have a quick question. So the date, the change of the date on the contract, the original date was October 31st, 2018, and the new date is, according to the paperwork, December 30th, 2019. Is that correct? Or is that, should that be set, stated December 30th, 2018?
That is correct.
2019?
Yes.
Could you explain a bit on, as far as why such a lengthy period of time?
Yes, there's no change in scope, there's no change in cost, it's just a change in time due to the extremely wet second half of the summer. Construction was delayed, and they can't do any construction during the winter. So hopefully next spring and summer are drier, and they'll be able to complete the project on time. The end of the contractors clause is the same date that we're extending the engineering clause to, in the December of 2019.
Okay, so although there's a delay, there are, we're not expecting any higher cost?
Correct.
Thank you. Any further questions? Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one quick question. What would be the warranty on some of the work done?
It's typically one year.
Okay.
On concrete work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item, item number six. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approves an agreement with Waterbury Youth Services Incorporated, as required by the Youth Service Incorporated Bureau Grant for Turbancy Prevention Services, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Board of Education. Alderman Napoli.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve item six, which has been seconded. Any discussion? Before recognizing, just want to clarify, I have a couple of questions here. Ms. Swain, was this previously approved by the Board of Education on September 20th?
Elaine Skoronsky for the Department of Special Education. No, it was not. It wasn't on the Board of Alderman. It was a different contract that related to the Waterbury Youth, but not this one.
Just to clarify, so this item actually was not taken on the September 20th Board of Education meeting?
Oh, the Board of Ed meeting, yes, it was.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I thought you said Alderman.
Further discussion? Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Skoronsky, how many students would receive these services?
Well, we watch the students absenteeism, and when they reach certain levels, they get close to. Well, we watch the students' absenteeism, and when they reach certain levels, they get close to what the State of Connecticut defines as truant, we refer them over to Waterbury Youth Services. Usually after we've done interventions and obtained services that we could get. If we find we're not successful, then we refer over to the Waterbury Youth Services.
Is there a maximum amount of students that you can refer, or there's no maximum number on there?
It's a good question, because they do hit a limit.
Okay.
Where they run into a waiting list probably in the early spring. So, I think we refer as many as we can, but whether they can get to them, is a question.
Thanks for your response.
You're welcome.
Alderman Macaro.
Good evening. In relationship with what Napoli was asking, there is in Section 6.5 where it says review of work, and also Section 16.1 where it says audit, it says that the city has the right to review and also to audit the reports and the work being done already and the kids that have been served. Have that been done, how often, and what have been the results?
That's a good question, I mean, I think that's a standard clause in all of our contracts, so I don't think we conduct an audit regularly, but we have not, to my knowledge, audited the Waterbury Youth Service Program for this particular contract.
Could it be possible to do that so that we can track the services that they have been providing, how many kids have been served and taken advantage? And also the statistics on how the program has reduced the truancy?
Those are very good questions, I guess I'm misunderstanding what we mean by audit. I mean, I certainly get some information from them on data collection, and I did submit some to the Board of Ed, and I'm happy to make copies for you guys as well.
Would appreciate that.
But they, I do get numbers from them, not to answer all of your questions, but some of them, in other words, how many kids do we refer over per year? Last year, we referred 354 kids to Waterbury Youth Service. And we get a breakdown of the ages, and it's mostly middle and high school, with 62 from the elementary school. We find out whether or not they agreed to accept the truancy services, because the parents have to accept, so we collect numbers on that, some do reject services. We do track whether or not Waterbury Youth Service obtains referrals for our students to, for services that they might need, and they do a lot of that, they refer to other services for 184 kids. They do close some cases that they find to be successful, they watch their absences, and then they send those kids back to the school. Those are about 100 kids. Unfortunately, some kids remain truant even though joining the program, so they keep a record of that.
I would like to know how, how successful are the programs and the services that they provide to the students? How are they reducing the truancy numbers? And how many referrals do they provide, or provide the families to other resources if the services that they are not providing are helping?
Well, I think that part of your question on how do they reduce truancy is a number we can get better next year, because I think that the Board of Education was interested in the numbers of absences that the students have.
Because the last year, they, they received the grant as well, so they've been doing the service, they've been providing the service.
Yes, they have. I mean, I think it might be hard for them to track absences, but of course, we work together, so they'd obtain that information from us. So in other words, finding out how many absences they have while they're in the program, if their truancy stopped at that time and their attendance improved. I think those are numbers we could get, we don't, we get more of what happens with the kids and where they refer, but we don't get the actual numbers of absences and how they're affected by the program.
Okay.
So we can do a better job for that next year, I think the Board of Ed is interested in that, too.
Thank you.
But I do have these, and I'm happy to pass these out and get these over to your clerk, and you can see over the last few years what they've done. But I do think we need more, better data collection points for the future.
I think so, too, thank you.
Thank you.
I have, I found another question I had, and I apologize, I should have done this all together, but I, my notes were not visible. So page 27, on the scope of services, 1.1, midway through paragraph, it states that in the event that the City of Waterbury obtains a congressional appropriation for its truancy clinic, the parties agree that the referrals to Waterbury Youth Services may be limited to certain schools or grades, to be decided by the Waterbury School System. I'm wondering, was that taken on or considered during the Board of Education meeting on September 20th? Do we know as of right now whether or not there are some schools that are going to be left out?
Unfortunately, I think that that should be deleted, because we did try to get monies for the truancy clinic that Judge Brunick used to run, but we were not successful at that, they had stopped those earmarks, you know, providing those, so I think that that's not relevant at this point to the city, unfortunately.
Well, thank you for being honest, yeah. And then I also, I can't locate it right now, but I know there was a matching fund by the city, I believe it was $75,000. Was that properly allocated financially on the budget, or?
Yes, it has been, they budgeted 75.5 for this grant.
Thank you. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you.
Motion, item number six carries. Next item, item number seven. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approves a lease agreement with 562 Connecticut LLC. Said lease is for property located at 562 Captain Neville Drive to house the Department of Education's food service operations. The lease term is for the period of 120 months, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Board of Education. Alderman Napoli.
Second.
I have a motion to approve item seven which has been seconded, discussion? Do we have Ms. Swain? No?
Sorry, Linda Franzese, Food Service Director?
Excellent, first question, was this item also approved during the September 20th Board of Education meeting?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Could you elaborate a bit on what food service fund really is?
So it's through the USDA, United States Department of Agriculture, through the State Department of Child Nutrition. So all of the funding comes from USDA, and so nothing is through the City of Waterbury.
So it is safe to say that there's no money being spent directly from the City of Waterbury?
That's correct.
Any further discussion? Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just curious, why do you think there was one single bidder on this project? Just curious.
I would say, given the size of the space that we need, we were kind of in between levels. We needed to be more than 10,000 square feet, but, sorry, more than 10,000 square feet
Okay.
but underneath, you know, 25,000, you know, we wanted to be between 15,000 and 20,000 square feet, and available properties just weren't, weren't there in that size, that met the specifications that we needed, loading docks and the ability for truck access and things like that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, but.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Any further discussion on item number seven? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Item carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Next item, item number 10. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approves a grant agreement with, for the local bridge program Cherry Street over Greatbrook, Bridge Number 151030, State Project Number 915/0030 on the amount of $213,686.35, as submitted by Salvatore Porzio, Project Manager, Public Works Department. Alderman Napoli.
Motion to approve item 10?
Second.
I have a motion to approve item 10 which has been seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item, item 11. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approves the acquisition of property interest for Waterbury Active Transportation and Economic Resurgence or Water Project, as submitted by Salvatore Porzio, Project Manager, Public Works Department. Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, motion to approve item number 11?
Second.
I have a motion to approve item number 11 which has been seconded, any discussion?
Excuse me, Salvatore Porzio, Project Manager?
Go ahead, Mr. Porzio.
DPW, I just want to point out for this matter that in, attached in the package was the city plan commission approval. That was part of the package I submitted.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Last item on our agenda today is old business number one. Your intergovernmental committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approves the lease and subsequent sale of 63 Prospect Street, as submitted by Linda Webby Corporation Counsel. Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, motion to approve old business, item number one?
Second.
I have a motion to approve which has been seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. I would enter, turn the motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Okay, with that, we'll return to the regular order of business. The following items are on the consent calendar. Item number one is receiving place on file, item number two is on consent to approve Amendment Number One to change the contract time for the engineering agreement between the City and Rizzo Associates for the Shipog Reservoir Dam Repair Engineering Services Project for the Waterbury Development, uh, Water Department. Item three is on consent to receive in place on file the City of Waterbury Financial Status Report for fiscal year end 2018. Item four is on consent to approve the general fund balance report, or to receive in place on file the general fund balance report for fiscal year 18. Item five is on consent to approve of the per capita funding application contract award in the amount of $113,898.94 submitted by Cynthia Vitone of the Health Department. Item six is on consent to approve an agreement with Waterbury Youth Services Incorporated as required by the Youth Service Bureau Grant for the Truancy Prevention Services. Item seven is on consent to approve a lease agreement with 562 Connecticut LLC. Said lease for property located at 562 Captain Neville Drive to house the Department of Education's food service operations with a term of 120 months. Item eight is on consent to approve the capital appropriation, or to set a public hearing for Monday, October 9th at 6:55 PM in these chambers with respect to a capital appropriation and bond authorization for improvements at municipal stadium in the amount of $5 million. Item nine is on consent to approve a purchase and sale agreement with the Connecticut Light and Power Doing Business as Ever Source Energy in the amount of $2,103,524.91. Item 10 is on consent to approve a grant agreement in the local bridge program Cherry Street over Greatbrook, Bridge Number 151030, State Project Number 91510030 in the amount of $213,686.35. Item 11 is on consent to approve of the acquisition of property interest for the Waterbury Active Transportation and Economic Resurgence Water Project. New business item number 12 is on consent to receive and place on file the Waterbury Police Department 2017-2018 Annual Report. An old business item number one is on consent to approve a lease and subsequent sale of 63 Prospect Street. Is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Motion approved the consent calendar as read.
Made by Alderman Brunelli and seconded by Alderman Napoli. Are there any additions or deletions to the consent calendar? Hearing none, a yes vote will be to approve the consent calendar as read, a no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries unanimously, the consent calendar is approved as read. Before we adjourn, oh, with respect to standing committees, the chair would recognize Alderman Dijo Van Carlo as the Chair of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize that the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $1,906.94 submitted by Frank A. Caruso, Revenue Collection Manager.
Motion having been made by Alderman Martinez-McCarthy and seconded by Alderman Kulaup. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries, the refunds are approved. Before we adjourn, I have a letter from Fire Chief Dave Martin regarding the graduation ceremony, and it's an invitation, so I'll read it to you. The Waterbury Fire Department will be hosting a graduation ceremony for recruit class 1812 on Friday, September 28th, scheduled to begin at 6:00 PM and will be held at the Rotella Interdistrict Magnet School Auditorium at 380 Pierpont Road. I wish to extend an invitation to you and all City Aldermen to join us at this event. The City of Waterbury played a very important role in this training, and I wish to thank you and the entire Board of Aldermen for all the support provided to our department during the hiring process. The recruit members graduating on this evening have worked incredibly hard over the past month and have come to earn a place within the Waterbury Fire Department. I am hopeful that you will join us in recognizing each of these recruits for their accomplishments and in welcoming them as our newest members to the Waterbury Fire Department. Respectfully, David J. Martin, Fire Chief. So again, Friday, this Friday, September 28th, 6:00 PM at the Rotella Interdistrict Magnet School. If you are free and you can make it, it would be great to support the new fire recruits. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none, Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Lopez, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you all very much.
And then, what we're going to do is, I'll talk to Joe, he's one of the men that's back.
Yeah, he talks, yeah. Yeah, we gave him a date.